Okay, we'll call to order the regular meeting for the Oneonta City School District Board of Education for September 23rd, 2020. Can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Grau.
Here.
Mrs. Kirkowski.
Here.
Mr. Gaseford.
Here.
Mr. Beckerink.
Here.
Mrs. Cashman.
Here.
Mr. Reynolds.
Here.
Mrs. Bernsworth.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolve to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Sentenced? Resolve to accept the minutes of the September 9th, 2020, regular meeting as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sentenced? Thank you. This brings us to our first opportunity to address the board, and we'll have another one later in the agenda. If those of you in the public wish to make a comment, there's a Q and A at the bottom. You can type something in there, and we'll read that, and we'll catch up at the second opportunity, which will come after the business manager's report. We'll move on to the personnel. Resolve that the reading of the non-certificated personnel memorandum 2020-15 be waived, and that the action items dated September 23rd, 2020 be approved as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Grau, if I could, you'll note that Sarah Krone is listed to receive or to be approved for permanent status. Sarah's an administrative specialist here in our business office and does a wonderful job, and certainly want to congratulate her.
Thank you. Congratulations. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Sentenced? Resolve that the reading of the Teaching and Administrative Personnel Memorandum 2020-15 be waived, and that the action items dated September 23rd, 2020 be approved as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Sorry, Bill, real quick. I'm sorry. I was trying to find that mute button. Chris Johnson with his resignation from the robotics times, they're planning getting filled, or we wait until spring?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna monitor that, Sean. Skip Copperweed, who, you know, had advised that group for many years, under the circumstances could not do that this year. So, so we're gonna monitor that and see if we can resurrect it. But, you know, in light of the concerns relative to the looming 20% state aid cut, you know, it's one of those things we're just gonna have to keep an eye on.
Okay. I figured. Thank you.
You got it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Sentient? All right, thank you. Bring this, brings us down to the superintendent's report. Mr. Brenly?
Sure, I have a couple of items, but if you don't mind, but I'll start with our capital project. Interestingly enough, with our new boilers, we experienced a defect in the metal G of the pipes that were were feeding our new boilers. These were, these were the connecting pipes to take us from the old system to the new. An interesting defect that essentially the metal was deteriorating from the inside out. Therefore, clearly, we were experiencing some, some issues. Almost all of that work is done now at no cost to us to replace those pipes. The only downside is, you know, especially with the cooler mornings recently, the middle school and high school have been offline. So, you know, we're hoping by early next week, the middle and high school will be up and running. All of the elementary buildings, you know, we had to get the heat running a little bit. It was chilly in there in the mornings, you know, running in the upper 50s. So the heat's been turned on. Other than that, our, our project manager, as well as our own maintenance staff and custodial staff, are compiling essentially what will be the punch list for the project. And, you know, that, some of those things are being addressed on a daily basis. But, you know, a more formal punch list is in the works. You know, again, no change from our last meeting in that we are still waiting for our epoxy resin countertops for our middle school classrooms, which we're hoping will be here around October 5th. And our lockers for the PE lockers in the high school, hopefully, middle or three weeks into October before we receive those. And the installation time for those lockers is between three and five days. Other than, yeah, go ahead.
About the boiler, were the boilers examined for any damage that could have been caused?
Yeah, they were, and, you know, I, you know, nothing like that would ever seem advantageous. But it did give us an opportunity to build in these, for, and I, because I believe this is the, this is the terminology, these filter socks that, you know, not only help us with the, with, you know, they're catching all sorts of material that travel through those pipes. So, believe it or not, I think it ended up being a good thing, as you know, a few months back, or maybe a year now, I don't even recall. I had shared a concern relative to some pumps in our new boilers, because we had a high level of magnetite. So this is kind of catching it all. So we were able to put those on all the boilers, or in the process of putting them on all the boilers, which will prolong the, hopefully prolong the life of all of them. So, so no, no damage. You know, as, as you know, we put in an inhibitor through those pipes that was, you know, suggested not all that long ago, and that process is still continuing. But that's proven to be a wise move as well. You know, as those socks have certainly caught a lot of particulate that was, that happened to be in our, in our systems. So other than that, knock on wood, no, no noticeable issues with our, with our boilers.
Great.
If I could just move on to our, our plans that are underway to transition to a hybrid model, tentatively scheduled for October 13th. And as you know, that's consistent with our reopening framework that was presented back in August. Yesterday, we had sent out a correspondence to our families wherein we were asking for somewhat of a firm commitment relative to, you know, parent and guardian plans for their students, excuse me, and to share with parents the cohort group that their child or children would belong to. As you may recall, you know, our blue cohort will attend in person on Mondays and Tuesdays, and learn remotely Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, while our yellow cohort will learn remotely Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and attend in person on Thursday and Friday. There is still a group of students that, for a number of reasons, will remain 100% remote until further notice. Anyway, what we, what we encountered, which is interesting, but, but purely understandable, is that, you know, even though we have over 800 respondents at this point, you know, many phone calls came in today by parents saying, you know, I kind of really need to know what hybrid is gonna look like. And, you know, that's on me, because, you know, we had sent out similar surveys over the summer. But I think the fact that the same questions were asked in such close proximity to this possible transition, that it prompted some additional questions. So, you know, as you can imagine, we're pretty excited about, you know, having students back in our buildings. But it's not gonna be without its challenges. The hybrid format is, is not ideal, but, you know, we delayed the start of our school year as we monitored the collective health of our, of our community relative to COVID. You know, and we're fortunate that the COVID outbreak that did occur here has not developed into, you know, a substantial widespread transmission that was initially concerned. That being said, and in consultation with the Atsico County Department of Health, you know, and based on the current collective health of our community, we were encouraged, and not only us, but, but all schools in our respective BOSIs, we're encouraged to move ahead with our reopening plans. So tentatively, and October 13th was, was a logical date in that it was the start of the second five weeks of the first quarter. So we are in the planning to move ahead with that. And I know many parents are looking for a degree of specificity relative to what hybrid is gonna look like, which is, which is, which is not easy to provide. In an ideal situation, what students are experiencing now won't change that much. You know, many teachers are very comfortable and have the technology to, you know, stand in front of their students who will be in person and livestream their lessons to those who are home remotely. Now, and there, there may be some variations to that. You know, there may be some, you know, lessons that are recorded and uploaded to Schoology, you know, that may provide an asynchronous opportunity for students. But ideally, our students are going to continue to follow somewhat the same schedule as they are experiencing now. However, you know, with the younger students trying to, you know, monitor students in front of you simultaneously trying to broadcast out to students at home can be a bit more challenging. So we have engaged in several collegial meetings over the past few days. Colleen, Mrs. Moore has done a wonderful job facilitating those, as, as well as our administrative team. So, for example, you know, our, our vision for our younger students, you know, we're hoping for a degree of consistency across grade levels. We, you know, at the younger ages, we are truly hoping, hoping to focus more on, you know, the children in, in person at the time, as opposed to technology. Because as you can imagine, younger kids need a bit more attention relative to instruction. So along those lines, our younger kids might get a combination of both. You know, there, there might be some recorded lessons. There might be some paper packets to accompany learning. And of course, the students that are present will be learning in person. Now, as we progress up through the grades, that can take on a similar, but more uniform structure. As I mentioned before, you know, most of our students will be learning simultaneously. Those in class, while those learning at home will simply attend their Zoom. And, but it won't always be the same. So now it's incumbent upon me to go ahead and share that information with our families, so they have a better opportunity to make a more informed decision. And even though that was given much attention today, we'll put the finishing touches on that tomorrow, along with providing our families the opportunity to have, have a couple more days to, to make that important decision. So we will go change, change that. And we will continue to keep you up to date on, on what's happening with that. Held a Zoom meeting today with many members of our faculty and staff. And, you know, it was a very, it was a very good meeting. And listen, we set the bar very high, you know, Yana, relative to our instruction. And, you know, just like I'm sure our parents, you know, as this date approaches, you know, we're all feeling a bit anxious, because all we want to do is the very best that we can. And this is all very new to us. So, you know, again, we're just gonna ask for patience and understanding, you know, as we do transition, as this will certainly not be perfect, but will be the, the best that we can offer under the circumstances. And we will learn and grow as we go. And, you know, but we are looking forward to having kids back in, in, in school, for sure. I know here at Center Street, you know, many of the Y kids are, are back. And the other day, they were singing, and it really, you know, just sounded nice to, you know, to hear kids in, in a school building. I know some of my colleagues that work elsewhere, you know, based on the encouragement and recommendations of the Department of Health, you know, those buildings that were able to open, many of our K-12 buildings regionally are able to open in full capacity, because they can accommodate their students in full capacity, you know, without any degree of modification relative to physical distancing. And I know that, you know, some of the superintendents have said, you know, after six months, it's really great to hear kids in our hallway. So I think we're all looking forward to that. However, on a, on a very different note, just want to share, you know, where we are relative to the looming threatened discussed 20% state aid reduction. Obviously, that's extremely problematic for all public schools in New York State. But certainly wanted you to know that, you know, recently, the state had mentioned that they had not decreased the September payment. But that payment goes directly to the teacher's retirement system. And, you know, in most, most likely, that wouldn't have been reduced anyway. However, on September 17th, when we did receive our BOSIs aid from last year, it was reduced by 20%. So even though we're being cautioned not to make any dramatic changes to our programming now, we're working very closely with fiscal advisors. We have put some things in, in place to create some savings now. We have essentially enacted a spending freeze, only spending on items that are deemed instructionally necessary, or items relative to health and safety. We did just purchase 1,020-inch cardboard privacy corrals, which will help us be able to accommodate students in our cafeterias, and as well as some secondary seating for the lunch process in the, well, in all of our buildings. But we are able to move desks into the tile gym in the high school. Mr. Ballard's been doing a wonderful job, you know, working through the logistics of offering meals and lunch to such a large group of people on any one day. So that obviously is a necessity that we, you know, we needed to deal with in order to bring our kids back safely. Other than that, we, you know, of course, we have delayed athletics, which will provide some savings, not just us, but across the board. Schools have delayed the start of athletics. We have also delayed the start of clubs, except for Link Crew, which serves a crucial component to the transition of students into our high school. But all of those things for now will provide some savings along the way. Many of that will provide some substantial savings, but certainly not get us to upwards of $3 million that 20% across the board state aid reduction would create. And because of that, you know, the planning for, I guess we could consider a worst-case scenario, is, is underway and has been underway for a while. But now we're only offering authorized overtime, which is not much of a, an issue right now. But when the inclement weather does hit, we're gonna monitor that. It's generally snow removal and the time it takes to remove snow. If we can reduce that, even though I understand, on top of everything else, this is gonna be a La Niña year, which could end up dumping more snow on the Northeast. But of course, what else would we expect? So I just wanted to, you know, share that with you. You know, we, we're working hard on that. There's, there's a lot of plates in the air, as you all know. And it is an anxious time for all of us. You know, more than anything, we just want, you know, everyone in our buildings to be healthy and safe. Again, we continue to collaborate very, very closely with the Department of Health. But other than that, that's all I have at this point.
I have a quick question, Tom. I don't want to put you on the spot. But what is the plan for starting up with physical education?
It's a, it's a, it's a goal, you know. In speaking with our teachers, granted, they have to maintain that 12 feet of separation. So ideally, whenever possible, we, you know, gonna be utilizing, you know, our outdoor areas. But, you know, in our elementary buildings, you know, they, right now, it appears as though our students should be able to spread out. You know, it may be more individualistic activity in PE. In the high school, between our gymnasium and the tile gym, and our phenomenal fitness center, which the, the middle turf section for our weight sleds should be installed, hopefully, by the end of this week. But other than that, almost all of the equipment is in, it's a really, really nice space. So we feel somewhat comfortable that we should be able to accommodate, you know, because when you have two of the three teachers with, you know, students on any period together, of course, that's, that's a bit of students. So, but we feel right now fairly confident that between all of those spaces, we should be able to accommodate, accommodate our PE, and being creative with the other content areas, our specialty areas that require 12 feet of separation, such as instrumental music and chorus. We're certainly gonna be using our larger areas for that. I know in the high school, the, the auditorium will be used for that, which I'm hoping to stop up and listen to someday. I think it would be neat here and everyone all spread out throughout that auditorium. So, so that's what we're, what we're planning, Darren.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You got it.
Thanks, Tom. And I just, you know, I know how hard you and Lisa are, are working on the fiscal plan. And, and I know how difficult that must be to, to start planning those things. Not difficult to do the planning, but difficult to know what you are planning. And that, you know, this cut that could be coming could absolutely gut everything that we've built over the last 10 years. You know, clubs, sports, electives, you know. And if you think about it, I, I know you know this, but not everyone realizes that the state does not give us our money until the spring. So really, our, our aid payments don't begin until probably March. So we've already spent more than half of our budgeted money before we know how much money we're gonna get. So it may be a 20%, but we've already spent 50%. So, you know, that, that really makes this very, very difficult. And, and I know that, that how, I guess heartbreaking this is for you, and I, and, and and it is for all of us that, that we're in this position. And, you know, I think, you know, as a public, if, if we can advocate, I know everybody keeps saying, if we get this federal assistance, these things won't happen. But that, you know, and I'm glad that you're planning, because hope is not a plan. And, you know, I guess if we can advocate to the federal government, I know our New York State representatives are, are on board with this, and maybe we can, you know, lobby some other out-of-state people to, to get on board with federal assistance, because this is going to be a dire thing if we sometime in January or February find out that our budget's being cut 20%.
Absolutely.
So, you know, thank you for, for that and for the planning that you're doing. And also, you know, the, the, the opening plan. You know, and again, work in progress, and I know you're meeting with the, with the, with the teachers and putting the final touches on that, so thank you for that.
Are we still going to stay with Wellness Wednesdays with this, with the hybrid model?
We are, Colleen.
Okay.
We're finding that the response to that has been overwhelmingly positive from a social and emotional health perspective, from, from all areas of education, whether it's, whether it's students, or whether it's the faculty and staff. It's, it's a nice way for folks to, to connect on a, on a little different level. And, you know, again, it's a, it's a, it's a neat thing that Colleen was able to share with us. And, you know, the response is, again, has been overwhelming, so we'd like to try and continue it for as long as we can.
That's great. I'm, I'm happy to hear that, because I think it has been wonderful for the students and the staff. It's a good, just mental break. And there, it's allowing, at least in my family, it's allowing my children to be able to catch up on work and go back and, you know, look at things that they've already done, too. And I think that's very helpful for them, so.
Good. It is, it isn't, it's a neat thing, and, and you're right. It just, okay, everyone is, everyone's uneasy about this. You know, it's not easy, it's certainly not easy being a student. You know, it's not easy being an educator, and it's not easy being a parent of school-aged kids. So, you know, Wellness Wednesdays is something that, you know, can, can help through these difficult times. We're, we're gonna try and create something here in the district office like that.
Seriously. Can we have it, can we have it at our institution, too? Bill, what do you think?
I have a virtual coffee hour with my staff every other week.
Maybe you should make it every week.
Yeah. Well, we kind of ran out of things. We were doing it once a week. We just ran out of things to talk about. So the only rule of that is no work. So it's, it's been pretty good. Any other questions for Tom on the superintendent's report? All right, thank you. We'll move on to the business manager's report. Resolve that the reading of Financial Memorandum 2020-16 be waived, and that the action items dated September 23rd, 2020 be approved as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Grau, Lisa unfortunately could not, Mrs. Weeks unfortunately could not make it this evening. So as you can see in the memorandum, we have some surplus items. These are items that are in various states down at greater plains. So we have put them on here as surplus items. And this way, we can, you know, And this way we can, you know, make some much needed room down at Greater Plains. And on the number two, this is an action item. And this is an action to, an actual item to correct an error on the 2017 tax roll.
Yeah, we talked about that in finance and that is going to amount to several thousand dollars. It's not a huge dollar amount, but it's enough that this, this business did receive an adjustment in their assessment and it wasn't reflected properly on that tax roll. So we have to, we have to pay them back. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Extensions? All right. That brings us to our second opportunity to address the board. And we do have a comment from Lori Dugan, who is one of our seniors. She's highly concerned about not being able to participate in clubs while distance learning. I'm in the process of applying for colleges and not being able to elect club, club officers has made it very difficult to accurately inform colleges of my achievement and leadership roles. Is there any possible way for us to have some club through online meetings? I miss my club advisors and being part of the group. I'm aware of the fiscal difficulties our school faces adds to the problem. I have some suggestions that may help in that area. Most of our clubs have fundraisers. What if we raise funds this year and we're able to support the clubs themselves, including helping pay advisors stipends? We could also ask for donations from club members themselves. If they can donate, wonderful. If it's not, that's okay too. We need clubs, especially seniors. We are competing against students from districts, regions and states that have clubs. And starting clubs in November will be too late for seniors. And I'll, I'll say Lori, we are aware of, obviously, you know, the, the impact that the fiscal situation that we're in has on everyone. And I think, you know, you have a suggestion there and you know, and now we have it and Tom can, can think about it. I don't know what the legalities are of that and, and the difficulties. But, you know, I think it's certainly something worth considering. And, and you should know that, as we said before, that the changes and the things that are going on are, are heartbreaking for us. And, and we're very hopeful that we're, we'll be able to have clubs and be able to do these things moving forward. And that was the only, the only comment. So we can move down to committee reports and we'll start with Jamie.
Okay. Ready to hear me? I got the right mute button pushed here. But I guess I'll comment on our finance committee meeting, which we had yesterday. You know, the tax tertiary stuff we already talked about. We certainly spent time on the fiscal situation as it evolves. And obviously a lot of unknowns, no different than last year. Except this one is, is a little more dramatic than the other things that we've had to deal with. But there's no question in my mind. You can't, you know, close down an economy for four months and expect things to be the same. And that is not just an onionta thing or a New York thing. It's a national thing. So, you know, we, we, you know, education is the second largest line item in the state budget. So, and that's, that's not news. And New York leads the nation in spending. So I, I don't have the answers, as I said here, but I do know something. You know, a permit, some permanent changes in the how we do it is going to have to be the case because I, I just can't believe that even if we get federal assistance, that's the Band-Aid for this year, but it's not going to change the future for us in education. And I have said this for a number of years. I truly wish we would get some direction in Albany at State Ed on things that would allow us to instruct less expensively and more efficiently. And there's a bunch of things we could all list. Based on our new norm here, I bet there's more things we could list. So I, I think as far as, you know, Bill mentioned advocacy, I think we need to advocate long-term as well. Obviously we'd like a short-term solution, but you know, this, this is not going to go away. And, and, you know, the economic impact, even our retirement monies. I mean, we're going to have issues for the next few years directly as a response to what's happened here. But, but long-term, it's going to be longer than that. So anyway, what else did we talk about? I think we covered, we didn't cover the surplus thing, but we did that committee. Or in the finance report. I think that was the, the main gist of it. Anybody else from finance having anything to add? Please do, I guess. But I'll, I'll just, I'll just say too, it's I gotta believe everybody's happy that we can have a, an opening here and have in-class instruction again. I think the students want it. I think by and large, the, the teachers want it. And, and I hats off to everyone who helped put these plans together and, you know, did the right thing. And now I think we're doing the right thing again. So as usual, we'll be flexible and nimble here and I'm sure we'll do the best we can in making this work for everybody. That's all I got.
Thank you. Darren?
Yeah, it well said, Jamie. From a fiscal point of view or fiscal standpoint, you know, short-term solutions are good, but I think we've, we've got a long-term problem that needs to be addressed, not only locally, but statewide, you know, as far as our spending in education. I mean, like Jamie said, short-term solutions work for now and no Band-Aid, but we kind of really start trying to think long-term. As far as getting back to school, I'm sure everybody's excited and encouraged. I know I have a senior at home that is going to school every day in her bedroom. And I know Sue Kirkowski has a senior as well and they're itching to get back and, and return to some normalcy. So I'm sure the teachers are excited to get back. At least I hope they're excited. And I'm sure that there's parents and students and teachers and, and, and the administrators are, are all happy and encouraged, hopefully to kind of get back to return to some normalcy. I also wanted to thank Tom and Lisa for, you know, working on the budget and trying to, you know, put some things together and try to, you know, save, save on some money in case we, you know, do hit, hit a 20% reduction. And, and then Tom and all the administrators for putting together a hybrid plan that get us back, you know, pretty seamlessly. I've talked to some people in other districts. It's not so seamless because they've changed things in big ways. Now they have to get back to a regular schedule where we can kind of hit the ground with our feet moving. You know, we're already in our schedule from, from a period standpoint. So I'm, I'm kind of encouraged about that. So I was up to the high school and I was able to see the, the locker rooms and the fitness room. And I was really excited, encouraged about that. It really is phenomenal. If you guys ever get a chance to get up, take a look at it, it's really beautiful. It came out nice. So that's all I have.
All right. Sean?
I feel like Dan's sitting here checking off the things that I need to make sure I talk about tonight. Trust me, I, I won't be going as long as him. I promise. I promise. First thing I, I have in my notes is Sarah Cron, congratulations on your position, your permanent position. Well deserved and, and I'm sure you're going to do a fantastic job. The second thing I have here, Lori Dugan. Thank you. Thank you for coming to this meeting and actually making a comment about what is important to you and your friends and your other students where next year it's a big step. And you're right, losing your sports, losing your clubs, losing everything we, we can't have right now. It hurts. I get it. And we all get it as a board, as a district, and it's not something we enjoy. But we're trying to get through this as best we possibly can. But I want to thank you for getting in this meeting and making the comments that you did because not every student will do that. A lot of students will sit in the background and then, and make mumbling and the grumbling. But thank you very much for bringing it to our attention. And trust me, our district is doing the best we possibly can with this to make it right for, not just us as a district, but for the students. Third thing I want to talk about is every day I'm home with my daughter, listening to her Zoom meetings at 7:42 in the morning as she's rolling the sleep out of her eyes, sitting in her Spanish class. And I have to say that I, you know, I think, I think I talked to Tom about this and other people about this, but the, the way we're going about this Zoom right now, I sit back and I just go, wow. Mr. Mole, I can only speak for your building because that's where my daughter is out of. They are doing a knockout job. I sit and I listen. And, and I hate to admit I participate, but you guys are doing such a bang up job. And I'm sure the same thing is happening up in the high school. Anne and Walt and Nancy and Melinda, you guys are doing, trust me, I'm sure you're doing the same thing, but I can only attest for what Tom's doing down there at the middle school. And thank you. And those teachers, they're into it. They are into it every minute for the, for as long as they're teaching. And all of a sudden I notice, oh my gosh, we're going past our, to our time. We gotta get off and let these kids start their homework. So it is great. Thank you, guys. And the fourth thing I want to comment to Jamie, yeah, you did, you hit it right there with the finance and, and unfortunately, a lot of folks don't understand what goes into what Lisa Weeks does, what Tom puts together and sitting down and understanding the line by line by line of the state gives, what Bosie gives, what we gotta pay, how much we're going to get, how often we're going to get it, and let, let alone when, if we are going to get it. So I did get a chance to sit in yesterday's meeting and I'm not part of the finance committee, but I'm going to tell you right now, it was an eye opener. To sit there and look at those numbers and understand what's happening to not just our district, but the other 688 school districts in the state of New York who are going through the same thing. And the amount of work that's being put on our business manager and our superintendent is unfathomable. So Tom, Lisa, thank you. Continue the hard work. We're here to support you. And it's all about our preparation for what may happen. Darren, you were right. That's exactly what it's all about. We can't just, when it's here, let's start now. We can't do that. We're doing the right thing. And but again, I don't want to beat a dead horse. We're, we're, we're doing the right thing and moving in the right direction. But again, Tom, thank you. And Lisa, I don't know if you're listening or if you're even, you watch this tomorrow, but you, you're heading it. You're doing a great job. So thank you very much. And for my committees, I have nothing because unfortunately we're not able to get together yet. But the finance committee, and I really encourage our, our community. When you see these on our, our school district website, please attend them. So you can understand as well, instead of making assumptions of how this actually works with the business of the district and the state of New York and giving us money for education. And Jamie, right, a $25 billion line item for just New York State's budget is state education. It's a big number. So please keep that in mind. If you're going to attend those meetings, please do. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Cash?
I don't think it's very fair that I have to follow Sean right now. Yeah. So I would also like to just echo Sean with thanking Lori for bringing up the situation about the clubs because having, you know, worked at a college for however many years and been a collegiate coach and seeing however many resumes of student athletes and knowing how important it is to get into college, I can understand that. And, you know, I hope I think there's definitely ways. I mean, just, just speaking my own personal opinion right now, I think there should be some ways that, you know, we could be able to, you know, maneuver that. And in the meantime, Lori, I'd be happy to help you and, you know, trying to think outside the box, just sitting here. You know, leaves are going to be falling pretty soon. And I think if you coordinate a project with some of your club members to rake leaves in the community, that could look pretty good on your resume. So just some things right now, you know, think outside the box could just help you in the meantime, until we get some clubs going. So aside from that, we did meet, Bill and I, last week for the Equity and Inclusion Committee. And we talked about some different things. And how to get it going again, since it hasn't really been in existence for a while. And we talked about, you know, how to open it up, you know, opening it up to the high school and middle school teachers, opening it up to the students, opening it up to the community. And then we kind of circled back around to how big can that get? Should we maybe just make it into a working group? So I think, you know, we're kind of still massaging that and kind of wanted to look at, you know, you as a board members and, you know, everyone else sitting in front of me right now to, you know, think of, or just kind of get your opinion. Talked about, you know, maybe coming up with a focus statement, an action plan, you know, where can we go with this? So we got, want to look at the climate survey, once that's out. See, you know, what the district looks like right now, what some of the issues are and concerns of the community members, the students, parents. So yeah. Bill, want to tag in at all?
I think you covered it. We're going to, you know, just looking for a plan to get it restarted. We'll put a call out for members. You know, we, we talked about keeping it, you know, to a size that would be workable. And, and to make sure that we, you know, had representation from faculty, students, you know, administration, so that we could hear all voices. And, and the climate survey certainly will be a part of that as we move forward. But we certainly don't want to wait for that. That was the, that was the other thing. So we'll probably, you know, and then I think probably once we get everybody focused on back in the school, we can kind of start to crank this up too.
That's all I have.
Okay. So, so our student comment actually experienced a problem we've all had. She happens to be using a Zoom session of her mom. So her mom's name came up. So it's her, it's actually Adriana Dugan, not Lori. So we'll make that correction. And she's doing a French lesson also because she's an all-state musician. All right. Sue?
Actually, I was just going to point out that it was Adriana. And Colleen pointed it out to me too. And, and she makes a great point as, and like Darren said too, as the parent of a senior and we're going into applying for college. We are kind of in a very unique situation where our applications may not look as good as some of the other schools, but I also think that we're, we're in a very similar situation to a lot of other kids. And I, I, it's my hope that colleges, colleges will take that under consideration. And I just, everything that everybody else said as far as, I think that Tom and Lisa and the entire administration has done a great job getting us to where we are now. And I think that I know as a parent, I'm ready for my son to go back. Two days is going to be awesome. He needs to get out of the house. But I, I think that, I think we're, we handled it correctly. We're never going to make everybody happy. It doesn't matter what we do. But I think that in the end, and I, I've always thought this is that the main thing is to make sure that the health and safety of the students and the, the staff and the community are the number one thing that we're looking out for. So um, and for, I had talked to Bill earlier last week. And I know that he and Colleen are getting that committee back up. And I think that something that came to me from one of the staff is that, you know, back in March or April, I don't even know when it was, but when we made a statement as a board talking about what is going on in society right now, I think that it might be a good time for us to for us to either reiterate that same statement or come up with another way that we're going to support our, our students, our staff, and again, our administrators and our community with everything that's going on. So, I'm glad that you're getting this committee back up and running. I know that there are, there will be students who will be excited to get involved in it. I know there's teachers, administrators, community members. So, I think that at some point as a board, we may want to consider making another statement or just reiterating what we did say previously. And that's all I have.
Amy?
Gosh, what can I possibly say? Couple of things came to mind. You know, Darren talked about there being, you know, he and Sue have seniors this year. Lisa and I had seniors last year and, and we're faced with, with some different senior problems. So, it's, it's interesting as we go through this and, and it just is kind of a reminder that this has never happened before and it's, and at least in our lifetime and in this day and age. And so, we have to be mindful of that and and that things aren't going to be the way that they've always been. And we're kind of being forced into some, some change. And, you know, with the, with the budget and, and as it's been said before, it's not just us. It's every other school in the state. And there's schools in the state that are, that are dealing with $15 million deficits. And it's all relative to their size. So, there's smaller schools dealing with bigger deficits than we have to worry ourselves with, but it is a worry. And, you know, I just want everybody to know that we as a board, our priority is, is finding that balance between programming for our students and being fiscally responsible. We're always keeping that in mind. And it might not be the perfect solution for, for every, everything that we have right now. But, you know, keep in mind that, that we are, we are trying to balance it and, and do the best we can with what we have. And then as far as, you know, return to school and the hybrid, the word I, I kind of have come to this week is fatigue. I mean, everybody's been running on full high tests or, you know, full function. And, and, and I think we're getting there. And I think sometime in October, it's going to settle down and maybe, you know, maybe we can all take a collective side, but we're still not there yet. And so, be patient with each other, be patient with your teachers, be patient with your administrators. And that's really all I've got to say.
Thank you. There was another comment. Mr. Mole thanked Sean for his, his comments. I want to make sure I get that out there. You know, we, we covered a lot of, a lot of different things. We talked about advocating for, for Albany. And if you recall, several years ago, the state enacted a tax gap and, and the deal with that was there was going to be mandate relief that would come with it. And that has never materialized. And, and so, we're held to our side of the bargain, but the state never held up their side. So, there would be a good thing to advocate for. But I certainly agree. I think we need to, you know, the, the governor said we need to reimagine education. And, and I think everybody packed thinking we were going to be completely hybrid or completely online or, or, you know, but I think there needs to be some, some new imagining, certainly of how we educate and how we fund it and, and what we spend our dollars on. I do want to announce that we have a new board contact form. It's on the board page of the district website. And the public can go out and fill out, fill in a question and, and put some contact information in there. And when they submit it, for now, it comes to Amy and I. And, and we'll read those and respond appropriately or, or forward to the appropriate person as needed. But that was out there, you know, it seemed like there was no real way other than coming to a board meeting to, to reach out to us. So, we, we put that out there. We're in discussions about when we're going to return to meeting in person. Certainly, you know, once, once we have students in the building, it only makes sense for us to meet in person too, in a, in a socially-distanced and appropriate way. So, we're looking at that. If it's not the next meeting, it will most likely be the meeting after that. And one thing that Amy suggested today was that, you know, we not hop around the district, that we pick a spot, probably the high school auditorium, where we can socially distance and the audience can socially distance and, and we'll be okay. But I think definitely getting back together will be, will be nice. I realized today, it has been six months. You know, we were talking at work because you know, there's four of us that come to work and there's normally 24 of us in, in this office. And, and, you know, it's, it's been an interesting time and, and it's been six months. So, it's kind of, kind of strange. And Amy, you kind of touched on the, the, the stress and the anxiety that people are feeling. And, and that's true. And it has been six months. And, and, you know, especially, we, we talked a lot about Wellness Wednesday and, and the, and students being able to, to take that break and get, and catch up. And, and I hope that our staff are able to do that too. Certainly don't want to overlook what this means to them and, and how stressful this can be. And, and I hope that, you know, that, that everyone on the staff is able to take some time for themselves. And, you know, if it's on Wellness Wednesday or if it's after school or, or, or to do some things that, that can be mindful and, and, and help you regenerate somewhat. We do appreciate everything that's going on and everything you're doing. And, and, you know, as we move forward, obviously, everyone's health and wellness is, is paramount. And, and second to that is making sure that we get our students educated and that we do the things that we need to do and, you know, the reasons that we're here. And hopefully, you know, fiscally, we'll be able to do all the great things we want to do. And, and, but we'll continue to do the, the things that we absolutely have to do. I think that was everything that I had. So, with that, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of special education and personnel.
Oh, move.
All in favor? Opposed? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
See you in a few.
Bye.